Um, s- the first is meeting minutes. Does anybody have any comments on the meeting minutes?
Do you want to introduce the members for the TV audience?
Are we doing that every meeting now?
John's been doing that every meeting.
Oh, all right. Hello, everyone. I'm Kathleen Pearson, Vice Chair of the Planning Board.
And Acting Chair for tonight.
And I'm David Powell at the end here as usual.
John O'Connell, next to Kathleen.
Martha Taylor, Town Planner. We have a quorum.
We have a quorum. So if everyone's read the meeting minutes, do we have a motion to accept meeting minutes as written?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, appearances, has that been postponed for this evening?
I do not-
They have postponed?
Uh, no, I- I have not heard anything.
Not here.
I've had a call from Dana while I was gone who, um, said he wanted to do it the next meeting, which is tonight.
Yeah.
And I haven't heard anything since, so.
All right, then we'll go to, oh, I can hear the echo in the room. Um, we'll go to old business, update on 101, new report turnpike.
Well, Hancock has, for whatever reason, bailed out of that project, would rather not be involved. And so Angelo has hired Cameron Engineering, and we've got Fred Ford, who is a good solid hand. I've known Fred for years. He's a- he's a good engineer and a good guy. So I think he- they well have some influence on the thing. There is a meeting among Doug, Angelo, and Fred tomorrow sometime. And that's about all I know.
Okay. Martha, do you have anything to add?
No, I don't. So, um, we won't know, have an update on the schedule until after that meeting takes place, yeah. I'm sure Fred's been trying to get up to speed.
Yeah, and I'm not sure Fred, uh, has been into it enough to have a schedule yet.
Right.
I think Fred, uh, Doug, what he told me, absolutely read the riot act. It would have terrified me if I got a phone call like that. I don't know how it affected Angelo, but he did call back damn quick. So-
Okay.
Hopefully he gets it.
An update on the storm water rules, regulations, revisions?
Uh, all I can report is what I heard from John. John and I both talked with Joe, and John emailed me to say that he was good with leaving things the way they were.
So they're currently being reviewed by consultant, or?
It was reviewed by the consultant.
So then where do they stand right now?
Well, there was, he had one suggestion, two suggestions. One is, he didn't think it ought to leave the planning board. And Joe, and, I mean, John and I both explained to him why it probably was a good idea to let the planning board. And the other one was to allow silt socks. And I was supposed to talk to Doug, and I failed to do that. But we- we accept those all the time, so I don't think there's any- any reason why we shouldn't put that in. I think that was a good catch.
So if it's been reviewed, I guess the question is, is where, what's next?
Well, um, I don't know. That's a good question. Uh, we need, we can't have a public hearing until we have the subdivision rules and regs because the two are like love and marriage. I mean, that, they work with each other.
I understand, yes.
So, and I think actually the, uh, I'm going to talk tonight about the site plan review thing. I don't know why I didn't bring this up last meeting. I made a note on it. But the reason we have all of the, um, drawing requirements in one place, which is in the storm order, um, rules and regs, was so we didn't have conflicting sets, and that we would just augment, I mean, the things you don't need for a site plan that you certainly need for a subdivision. Um, and, um, but yet we have, in the new regs, we have a whole list of drawing requirements. And I was going to suggest that we- we just refer back to the stormwater drawing requirements and then augment that. Because most of what we have in the present draft of the site plan review document, um, most of those are already in the stormwater document. So it'd be, we'd end up with a half a page less if we just made that reference.
So I guess the question is, if you have the site plan review, you have the subdivision rules and regs, and you have the stormwater, sometimes the subdivision rules won't apply, but the stormwater might.
Right. Well, stormwater will always apply, no matter what.
So-
Because what we've said is, we want these, for jobs bigger than a breadbox, we want these rules to apply to everything.
So the drawing requirements are going to go in the stormwater document?
The drawing requirements are presently in the stormwater, and the subdivision rules have, say, do it like the stormwater regs say, but add the following.
Okay. You have any comments on that, Mr. Powell?
Uh, no, only that, uh, wait a minute. Um, where currently our subdivision rules and regulations are in a single document, and all of the rest of the zoning is in another document. Where is the stormwater going to be?
That's a separate document because it's a bylaw, it's a standalone-
It's a standalone bylaw.
Right.
Um-
With its accompanying regulations.
Yeah. Well, what I see as a problem there is that we're requiring people to obtain or look at two sets of documents if we only have the full drawing requirements in stormwater. Why can't, why shouldn't we repeat them certainly in subdivision, I would think?
Well-
If we ever revise them, we could just make sure that we revise them in all the documents, right? Because it's only like a- a page.
Yeah, that's always, always a hangup. You're quite right. The other reason, Dave, is not just the drawings that people need to look at the stormwater document for, it's every other doggone thing. Because we have erosion control and stormwater management in that document.
No, right.
And now what we're doing, what we would have to do is add fifteen or twenty pages to the stormwater regs and add the same number of pages to the site plan review. That doesn't make a lot of sense to me.
Well-
It's just, you know.
I'm talking about, I thought we were referring to the requirements for drawings.
We were, but we have the same referral for everything that any project that we look at-
But are you saying, well, wait, no, wait, I'm sorry.
I'm s-
Are you suggesting that requirements for drawings are fifteen pages long?
No, David. I'm saying that the stormwater regs, of which they're a part-
Yeah.
-apply not just to the MS four projects, which will hardly ever occur.
Right.
But to the, to the subdivisions and the site plans that we review.
All I'm suggesting, yeah.
Everything there, not just the drawings.
And OSRDs, and the OSRDs. They're all, they all-
And the, yeah, OSRD, we haven't, we haven't done anything with that yet, but it would, sure.
Yeah, so.
I'm just suggesting, I thought we were discussing the required documents for a submission under any one of these. And I don't see why we can't, I do not think it could be a good idea to have the, as I was understanding it, the rules and regs for how many documents you're supposed to turn in, et cetera, in only one place.
Well, I think, um, if I understand correctly, the way it would work is that, you know, site plan review has certain documents that, that are required, but stormwater becomes part of it. So for the storm, and I'm not quite sure exactly how it would work, but for the stormwater requirements, it would refer to the drawings.
Yeah. There, see, this, the stormwater is not just the list of drawings. There is a list of drawings.
I know, I, I know.
It is also a requirement that, basically, that you do it like the state says, subject to two or three things where the state is wrong, okay?
Right, right.
The state is in the nineteen twenties.
Okay, all right. I'm just trying to get at the fact that I, it seems to me that somebody should be able to look at the subdivision rules and regulations, okay? And they will know that they have to conform to the stormwater. But why can't they also find out that they have to submit ten copies of things, or whatever our standard is?
Well, I think they would.
That, that's in there. It's in there. We're not changing that, David.
Actually, no, I'm, I'm with David. I'm getting confused, too.
Yeah.
I think it's, it might be easier just to see exactly what we're talking about now because I, I-
Do you understand what it is I'm muttering about?
I understand where you're coming from, David.
Yeah.
I don't quite agree with you, but I, I think I get your point.
I don't know if we're necessarily talking about all the requirements, though, in the document. I think it'd be easier if we had the document in front of us to say, okay, this is the section that we're referring to. Are you on the same page as me, or do you or?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Do you have, do you have it right there in front of you?
I do. Maybe it would be better that we all have them. I have just one. Um-
But how, if you could just point out in that section exactly.
Yeah, I'll, I'll try, because I won't have any, it's, you know, there's a lot of words here. I'm going to suggest that we just, everybody bring their copy of the latest to the next meeting, and we resolve it then. But I will try to do it now. This is the site plan review.
Okay. Did everybody bring their copies of the site plan review stuff?
No. I guess we don't, I'm not looking to walk through the whole thing, David.
No, no.
Do you? I just want to know exactly what are the, how many pages or paragraphs are we talking about?
Well, we've got the whole, this is, this is only going to be cut by half a page. The ones I've scratched out are the, the ones that are already in the stormwater. And this was the, what I thought was agreed upon way we were going to go a year ago.
So the, I think the question, my question is, if David and I are both in agreement, we're, we're curious of, when you're referring from one document to the stormwater, when you turn to the stormwater-
Yes.
What are the, what are the requirements there? How long are those requirements? Is it just two paragraphs? They're not a big deal to put in everyone, or?
They are, yeah. Well, the whole stormwater document, stormwater, illicit discharge, sedimentation control, is all, is all a requirement.
We're just talking about the drawing requirements at this time.
Just drawings, okay.
Right, David?
Yeah.
Just drawing requirements.
Just drawings, okay.
Exactly, yeah, just drawings.
Because we, I don't want to stop there, but, okay, how are the drawings? Okay. The drawings requirement are, in the rules and regulations, are a bit over, a bit over a page, about a page and a half. And if we took this and, and knocked out those things that are already in here, at most, we would save a half a page. In round figures, we'd save a half a page in the storm, in the subdivision documents.
So why do it, is my-
Well, because we agreed we were going to do this, as many as I can recall, a year ago.
I don't.
That's why it's written this way. I don't have a dog in this fight particularly. It struck me as though what we had done was easier for everybody, as a matter of fact, not just us, but the applicant. However, I don't really feel like going to the mat with it. If everybody except me wants to leave it the way they, the way it is, I'm not going to fight that. I've got a bigger fight to do.
So the, do we have the latest markup with the changes that you're proposing for moving it all over?
You don't have, no, 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 no.
So I think that's why David and I are having a difficulty not having in front of us, understanding exactly what is being-
Well, I can do that by the next meeting, if that's-
Are you agree, is that the issue, David?
Yeah, I'm, right.
Okay, I'm, I've got this a markup in one, it, it isn't in Martha's system. I will scratch out the ones that, in the subdivisions, that I don't think need to be there because they're already in the stormwater one. And just give that to Martha, and I guess you can-
Okay, and subdivisions or site plan review?
Uh, I'm sorry, site plan review.
Okay.
Subdivision already refers to the stormwater, for the drawing requirements, and anything that has to do with drainage. It already is that way.
I do remember having the conversation that we said the board agreed that we were going to go in that direction.
Yeah, it seemed to make sense to me.
I think that this just now is going back, and because it, we have these big gaps between things, a month or two months discussing it.
Yeah, I, I have always have a problem remembering.
It's hard to go back and, and understanding exactly how much are we cutting out, or what are we moving and why. And that's, that's why we're saying it's easier if we have those markups in front of us.
I don't think the-
Do we have the ability at next meeting to go through this, or do we have a deadline, Martha, on this?
Um, I think that, whoops, typo here. Um, I think that, um, we should schedule a meeting for next week, if that's okay with everybody. We talked about it tentatively and go through all of these. I mean, that's kind of our deadline, because then the following meeting, the board needs to vote to-
So our, our goal is just by the end of this month to have everything complete, correct?
Right.
Okay, so we, we'll talk about that schedule after the municipal marijuana, correct?
Okay.
Yeah, all right.
So I'll get something. You can, one way or the other, either correct it or just scan it in and send it to everybody.
Um, yeah, no, I can just, I'll-
I'll get this to you by Monday.
Yeah, I'll, I'll put the corrections in and redline it and-
Yeah, however, the way you usually do it.
And this will have all the corrections that you're, that you're proposing? Everything will be complete at that time?
It will be the, the changes to the drawing instructions that I'm proposing. I think there were, we were asked to, to have some other issues, and I don't remember if I had any other issues other than that. But I presume we will take care of those tonight. This is a difficult one, but the others, I assume we're still going to do what the plan was, which was to resolve everything that we can.
I thought that we've already walked through the document.
Well, I thought, Martha, didn't you give us homework?
Um, I-
I mean, Martha sent us a specific request-
To read through it?
To, to read through it, to be sure we were good with it.
Yeah.
Right, there, there were a couple, you know, it was to make sure that I had appropriately reflected what was discussed last time. And there were a couple of, a couple of comments on the bylaw itself, and then, you know, comments on, more comments on the submission requirements, because that was the first time that everybody had seen them.
So is the goal tonight for the board to walk through them again, each comment? I, I was under the impression, I apologize. I thought that we were supposed to read through it. If we have any issues, then we were going to discuss it and bring it up tonight.
Yeah, that's, that's, I thought that's what we were going, that's what I said.
I didn't think we were going to go page by page, so it-
No, I, I have only one comment other than the drawing thing.
Okay.
And that is on page two, at the bottom.
Of which document?
I'm sorry, of the site plan review submission requirements and procedures.
Okay.
Uh, and there's a bit of a conflict here. We're saying one and forty scale for submission. That really doesn't work for a site plan review. It's good for plans on a subdivision, but site plan review, you get, you don't, you can't see anything. It gets too busy.
Could you, I'm just calling in the document. What page are you on?
Page two.
Mm-hmm.
Bottom of the page, number five, first line of that paragraph says-
Don't seem to have copies of this available.
It-
Well, I didn't make copies for everybody, Dave.
I can make copies, I-
I, I don't, well, you know- How about I, this is a very simple thing.
Relax, relax, everybody relax.
Okay.
Okay.
It's okay.
So just tell us the section.
I, I'm just getting, uh, how should we say, over time, slightly frosted, as an unpaid volunteer, that I have to keep cranking out all this stuff, apparently, on my printer.
Oh, I don't do it. That's why I'm looking at it right now on my phone.
Yeah, so I really expect if we're going to have a discussion of a document, that the document should be provided.
Well, if you want me to make hard copies, I'm happy to. Um, just let me know.
If we're going to go into a level of detail that-
Okay.
I've got two characters that I want to change. It's not hard to grasp.
But we also-
Instead of a, can I finish, please?
Everybody has to calm down, though. The energy level over this is way too high for a typo, okay? Like, everybody just relax. Now, what, what is your comment, John?
My comment is that we are requiring, per the latest draft, a forty scale drawing plan for a site plan review. And I submit that is much too small a scale. We should have a twenty scale, one and twenty. So all I want to do is change the forty feet to twenty feet.
Right.
That's all.
Fine.
Okay.
And as a matter of fact, the, the wet, the stormwater by, uh, rules and regs already say twenty feet.
Well, that's, that's exactly to my point.
Well, it's to my point, too.
Well, no, when I-
You get conflicts if you don't have it all in one place.
Yeah, exactly, right.
Okay, so-
That's why I did what I did, David.
Okay. Martha, you're okay with that change?
That's fine. That was a holdover from the original document, and if-
Yeah, I, I don't know why I missed it before, but there it is.
All right. And are there any other comments on this document?
That's the only comment I have.
Which is, which-
The submission requirements.
The submission requirements.
Right.
Uh, oh, I can't remember. Yes, there's a mistake somewhere that, where it, level, I think it's the second page, and it says letter.
Says letter, yes, I just caught that.
Right, that's one.
Yeah.
But what I would like to come back to, I think, is the document where you had the actual bylaw itself, where you had a couple of comments in the margin.
Mm-hmm.
One of which was to change a word back from shall to may. It's the second comment.
Do you need the document?
No, that's okay, I can-
Yeah, it was the one on performance guarantee, and originally it said the planning board may require that a performance bond, blah, blah, blah.
Yeah.
And it had been changed to the planning board shall determine whether to require.
Yes. And then you're suggesting we go back to may?
Yeah.
Why?
Um-
If I may ask?
Because it actually, to me, it's saying the same thing with more words.
No, I think not.
Shall is that you have to, may is your requesting, right?
Right.
Yes. I, well, may, I think, is, it gives you the option, whereas shall mandates that you shall determine, which means you shall make a decision as part of it. And I think that is important because, going back to John's comment, not this John, but the absent John Weiss, about, uh, 101, new report turnpike, he said, maybe if we'd had a compelling wording that we had to determine whether a bomb was necessary, we might have done it.
Well, I think, I mean, the option was there, and the board decided that it wasn't necessary. In hindsight, that was probably not the best way to go, but, um, it's fi- it's just-
Well, I agree with Martha, but I, it doesn't make a lot of difference to me. I don't, I'm not going to argue one way or the other.
Can you read the sentence for me?
Whatever you guys want to do.
What is it, what is it exactly?
The way it reads right now is, as a condition of site plan approval, the planning board shall determine whether to require that a performance bond deposit of money, negotiable securities, or other such surety acceptable to the planning board be posted with the town. And originally, it said, instead of shall determine whether to, it said may require.
It's, it has to do with us making a decision versus requirement of the applicant. I mean, either way, we, we have the ability to do it, right?
Right.
Yes.
Yeah.
But procedurally, if you have something that says shall be required, okay, then you have to, you have to go through it as an item in your decision process. Whereas if it's may, you don't have to do it.
Okay, then I'm with the shall. I vote for the shall, then.
Right.
Well, I, I think shall just lets the person know that when they come in here, they're going to know right, right away that they have to give us a-
They don't, they won't know because we have to decide.
Right, but they know that we're going to-
It's still an option on our part.
Right, but the, it shall, it says that we shall, we, we're going to be, decide that.
Yeah.
When may, it says we may not talk about it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
Shall says we're going to talk about it. And they know that right from the beginning.
It goes from it's raining, I mean, if it's going to rain, to it's raining.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
Or snowing, as the case may be.
What was the other, the first comment, I think, in the red?
Um, the first one had to do, I think George had questioned whether site plan review could apply to educational projects, and you, you had ref-
Yeah. According to, okay, I, I, my concern is coming back to the wording. I know I'm a word monger, but I am. Uh, I do not like the phrase educational projects, because as a-
Oh, that was supposed to-
Former, you know, professor, that sounds like some graduate student's project.
Right. I was supposed to change that order, actually.
Yeah, okay.
And I didn't, so that's my fault.
And the other thing is, yes, we may do so, but it must be reasonable, as has been determined by case law over time in Massachusetts. And particularly in relation to things like height of the building, size, parking, there are a bunch of things which are set out very clearly in forty A, which is the, the enabling legislation that we're under. So I, I think the answer to George is, we can do it, but it's quite constrained. So we can leave it in there.
Martha, I, um, need to apologize. When I call up your document, I don't get the comments on the side. I just get the actual dom, um, document. So that's why I didn't realize there were questions on the side.
Oh, okay.
Oh, that's interesting. Well, let me see if that happens with, what are you using?
Um, we can discuss it after. We'll discuss it after.
Okay, well, no, we might as well find out.
Um, I don't have those comments. I just have the document itself.
Okay.
There aren't many.
The other, the other thing that, um, John had, John Weiss had requested last time, we had a sentence in here about, um, under performance guarantee, the board may also require that an amount be included for land restoration, not having to do with construction of improvements. And he requested that that be kind of looked at. So my suggestion was that an amount be included for restoration of land disturbed during the course of construction. So-
Yeah, I thought that was-
Does that work?
That solved the problem, yes. That was good.
I'm good.
And, um, the only other comment that I had in the margin was at the very end, under fees and penalties, we have some section references to subdivision regs, which will need to be coordinated with the updated draft. That's all. So that was more a note for myself and anything else.
So there's no other issues with this document that we need to look into?
Well, I had some things that-
Oh, you do?
Yeah, I've got-
Okay.
Two or three. Uh, start with page two, the very top. Um, this is a requirement for Level One or minor projects. Any changes to loading areas, dumpster locations, et cetera. I would question if somebody wants to move the dumpster. Is that, do we care?
Oh, I think you do care if it's residential property next door to it.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah, if they want to put it right out, you know, in the, on the street edge or something like that, without any screening or-
Yeah, okay, I, I stand corrected. I, I agree with that. Forget it.
I thought about, I thought about that, too. You know, it seemed a little picky, but-
Okay. Well, I'll go on to the same, going down the page, B four. Halfway through that paragraph, we're including activities to trigger a Level Two. Clearing necessary for percolation and other sites.
That's saying you don't, yeah.
Oh, except for work of, pardon me, okay, clearing is, okay, work in conjunction with an approved subdepl, or earth removal permit.
That's saying those, if I remember correctly, that's saying that that will not trigger site plan review.
Yeah, it does say that. It does say not, I'm sorry, except for, I missed when I was looking it over today. Okay, my apologies. Um, I think that was all I had. It was all I had.
Are you good, Linda?
Good.
David?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so should we move on to the next document?
Yeah, so, um, yeah, so, so the submission requirements and stuff, or do you want to wait until next time when everybody has a hard copy of that?
Um, did everybody have a chance to look at it? If you didn't have a chance to look at it, then it doesn't make sense to discuss it.
Yeah, I-
Would you like more time, David?
Subdivision, wait a minute.
No, it was a site, site plan review, the submission requirements.
Oh, site plan review, no, that's, that's, yeah, that's cool. That's all right.
Did you have a chance, John, to read it?
Oh, yeah, yep. I'm just finding it. Okay, my biggie was the plans, and I did mention already going to a twenty scale instead of the forty scale.
Yes.
And you've got that, Martha.
Yeah.
And that was about all I had. I, actually, I kind of thought we had a reasonably one, good one to start. I, um, actually, I kind of thought we had a reasonably one, good one to start with. I didn't think it was bad. I don't feel that way at all about our current subdivisions, I think they're horrible. But I thought this was pretty good, both this and the bylaw.
Martha, do you have any additional comments?
No, I did, um, you know, in rereading, I made a few edits myself, which were in red and the one that I sent you, so I guess I just wanted to make sure that those were okay with everybody as well. It was more of-
Again, I didn't get the red ones, comments on this for some reason, I love to.
No, it wasn't marginal comments, it was just the-
Red, red changes in the text.
The changes, yeah, I-
I thought they were all pretty straightforward.
I didn't have any quibble about there.
It was mostly, mostly wordsmithing.
Pardon me?
Mostly wordsmithing, really.
Yeah, no, I-
All right, so if that's the case, um, which is, next item is subdivision rules and regulations revisions?
Dave had picked up a, a boo-boo in there, and he had some further thoughts.
Is that the George comment, or is that something different?
Oh, okay, this was about bike-
Right, it was about-
Other sidewalks.
Yeah.
Sidewalks, yeah.
David, I think what I had intended to say, and I suspect that Gail couldn't read my writing, and left a question mark there that I failed to pick up on. What I think I intended to say there, and I think we, maybe we don't want to do this, that we would have, we would make the determination if, and we reserve the right to make the determination, that they had to have sidewalks on both sides of the street. Now, I'm not in favor of any sidewalks at all, myself, so I, I'm not pushing that, I'm just, I threw it in, and I don't know why I threw it in, but I'm quite happy to take it out. It's on 11734.
No, I think that's, that makes perfectly good sense in terms of, um, not requiring it on both sides of the street necessarily, but, um, the thing I picked up on was the fact that the original thing, anyway, it didn't really sort of deal with, and my, do we have a version of the, of what I suggested?
Uh, no, I didn't print that.
Oh, I've got one here, I can read it if you want.
John's got it, or I can copy it.
Yeah, okay, I want to do that, you can't copy the blue and the red, but, uh, which one? Are these both the same? Yeah.
They look, they look the same.
Copy that.
When did you have this discussion, because I was not aware of this comment?
It was, we were emailing back and forth.
Oh, or something between the two of you?
About a week ago it started.
What happened was, I was, um, deputized to redraft that in the way that I was obje, objecting to it, which I did, and I sent it, I can't remember if I actually sent it to John, but I certainly sent it to Martha.
You sent me a copy, yeah, I think it was Martha and me copied.
And he responded, and Martha responded to my-
Okay.
Changes, okay?
She might have copied me.
They're reasonably substantive that we need to-
But that's why Lynda and I don't know what you're talking about, because we weren't included in the course of-
Yeah, great, yeah.
Thank you, Martha.
I could see the possibility of a small subdivision, a moderate income subdivision, that is going to be full of people, young people with lots of little kids, and two sidewalks may be what the doctor ordered there. But beyond that, I think one sidewalk is plenty for a normal, average subdivision.
Even if you look at, like, Fadlin Drive, that's a large neighborhood, more like 100 homes.
Yeah.
And they have one side-
Yeah.
For a sidewalk.
Yeah, I'm not pushing the two sidewalks, I'm just throwing out the thought, that was the original intent.
Even High Road only has one sidewalk on one side.
Yeah.
If that.
Yeah, really?
Yeah.
My kids both survived.
So, okay, well, wait a minute, so, actually, uh, never mind. The, the, the one that you've now, Xerox, is not the one with the final correction that should read on both-
Oh, really?
Sides of the street, okay?
It should read, you, we didn't, I didn't make a correction, I'm just saying tonight what I thought. I think I was thinking at the time.
Okay, um, uh-
I'd say if the situation requirements four lines up, start there and scrub everything below it. If we, if we're happy with one side only and don't want to raise the issue, scrub the last four lines, three and a half lines.
Well, you say, huh.
This isn't hard, I don't know.
This is hard only because this isn't the second version.
Okay.
You just Xeroxed, Martha, I'm afraid.
Well, I, it's all I had with me, sorry, I thought that was the second version.
Okay, all right.
So is it, are we looking more at not what the intent of the paragraph is, but exactly the wording itself? What are we, what is the concern there?
Okay, well, look, what happened here is, um, the gray type on this is, is blue in my reference above, my changes queries are in blue, okay? So I had changed it from what it originally read as in the subdivision, current subdivision version, okay?
Yes.
And I had changed it to, to say, and bicycle ways shall be constructed of porous asphalt, bituminous concrete, or other permeable materials. John has a problem with that, which he can talk about.
We'll talk about that, yeah.
E.G. porous concrete, pavers, or turf reinforcing grids. Unless the board determines that pedestrian movement is otherwise provided for, sidewalks shall have a width of not less than, and then I changed it to four from five, because frankly, my quest here is to reduce the permeable-
That's fine, I get it, yeah.
A, a gravel base of eight inches and a three-inch-thick material layer, uh, because I didn't know, you can't say bituminous concrete, because it may not be based on my stuff above. Then I put, the design of sidewalks to accommodate use by bicycles is encouraged where separate paths are not possible, meaning you don't create a side, a situation where you have a, a very steep or step-type incline, okay? Because for a bike, that's not, it's not good. So on a sidewalk, you might put steps, but on a bikeway, you wouldn't.
Right.
Uh, you might also incline a sidewalk in a way you wouldn't for a bikeway. So where you're trying to have a multi-purpose device, you should essentially give, uh, attention to the fact that you, you don't put things into, into the way that makes it unusable by bikes.
I'm good with that, I have no quibble with that at all, I think that's a good, good addition.
And then the last part-
And the four feet is an issue.
It is an-
As opposed to five feet, which it is now.
Well, let, let's get through his paragraph, and then you can-
Right, okay, and then what happened was, as I said here, I thought the last sentence didn't make any sense.
It doesn't.
And it doesn't, but also, I hate phrases like, if the situation requires it.
Well, I'm suggesting we scratch the whole thing.
Okay.
Yeah, right.
So that would solve your problem, I think.
It would, it would, yeah.
We just totally forget that.
So as far as what he just proposed, why don't you now rebut against the things that you don't agree with, like the dimensions and the-
Okay, the remaining, there are two remaining issues, and one, I would just as soon make it four feet. Unfortunately, we do have some rules about disability, peoples with disability and so forth. For various reasons, one of which is passing, but another one, a, a wheelchair needs to turn around, and to do it comfortably, it takes a five-foot diameter circle. Okay, and that's why, well, any, any handicap bathroom, you have to draw a circle on the plan, and there's nothing that is in that circle, am I correct? Five-feet circle is the standard.
Yeah, but that's for a very different reason.
I know, no, it's for turning the, the, it's, it's for turning the thing around.
Yeah, but it's because, okay, go ahead.
The, the bottom line is that there is a requirement to, that we, we probably could dodge, but why bother? And almost every sub, virtually every subdivision rules and regs I've ever seen is five feet.
This is something that can easily be confirmed, though.
Pardon me?
Isn't there requirements?
Martha did check that down.
These can be confirmed, yes.
I, I checked ADA and the AAB, um, the Architectural Access Board, and, um, and ADA will allow four feet, but you need to have 60 inches wide for passing every 200 feet, which presumably you could get with driveways, or something like that.
Every 200 feet?
Every 200.
But then you have to make sure that you're doing that when you're doing, going through the-
You can't have a cross pitch when you're dealing with a pathway for wheelchairs. You've got to be relatively level.
Right.
And if you, if you use the driveway for that, that's probably not going to be that crash hot level. Driveways tend to slope back to the street.
Sure.
If you don't do it, then you've got a bunch of little oddball things every 200 feet.
That's fine, to me, that's just fine.
That's just a fine, so we'll go back to five feet? You okay?
No, 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 I don't.
You want to keep at four?
What I'm saying is that, okay, think about this, if it's every 200 feet, you're saving 200 square feet.
My, I agree with you, Martha, then we have to put something in the documentation to remind the board when we're looking at these subdivisions and looking at sidewalks that we address this handicap issue.
Yeah, well, so, so I think-
So that's the only thing that we need to add in.
I think we need to add in that they need to conform to ADA rule, whatever, I mean, right.
There's a general statement in the subdivision rules and regs to that effect.
But there might be one here-
As a reminder, because nobody-
Because it is an issue.
Yeah.
I, I agree with you, I think there should be a reminder, not just for the applicant design, but for the board to remember to look at it.
Well, exactly.
Yes.
Mass highway standards, believe it or not, are six feet, so-
Yes.
You know, I, again, I think it should be five feet, I'm not going to fight it, I'm not going to throw a tantrum.
Okay.
I think five feet makes more, more like everybody else is doing.
Well-
But I appreciate your interest in saving impervious surfaces.
Do you care, Martha?
Not really.
It's not a big deal, uh, boss-wise.
It does say minimum, so if, it does say, I think, minimum, doesn't it?
Not less than?
Not less than.
Not less than, yeah, so it's a minimum, so it could, they, if they want to, they could do 10 foot, I mean, you know.
Well, you know that a developer is not going to spend money if he doesn't have to. So if we say four, and he can get it with four, he's going to put four.
Okay, so now the other issue is-
And now is the, the previous pavement, and again, I, I am totally a fan of permeable pavement. Having said that, there's a number of reasons why, for a sidewalk alone, it isn't a great idea, from both the town standpoint and from the standpoint of the developer. I would much rather take the money he's going to spend on that and make him plant, plant a bunch of trees, or five rain gardens, or something, other than that.
I understand, because, but I think you need to explain to the viewers why it's a difficult, it has to-
Okay, I'm, I'm quite prepared to, yeah, okay. Start with, uh, David had sent, I should have brought it with me, David had sent just about the best brochure on permeable pavement I've ever seen. That was very good, very good. It isn't quite current, but it's still good, okay, it's close enough. The problem that I see with permeable pavement is, to start with, the rules for dealing with runoff, which are to make sure you don't flood, and secondly, make sure you, uh, inject it back into the soil. They're not prescriptive rules, they're basically a performance spec. They say, you've got maybe two dozen different, what they call best management practice, two, a couple of dozen tools that you can use, and the tools have various purposes. Some are good for this, some are good for something else, some are good for two things, some are good for only one in certain circumstances, and, um, I don't think that we should be telling somebody they have to use one of these, especially one that has not been through a lot, we don't have a lot of experience with it. We have damn little in the town, but the world doesn't have a great deal. There isn't a permeable pavement in the world that's been through a 20-year cycle of normal pavement life, uh, because if anything goes wrong with it, it's our problem, okay?
I'm actually surprised that this is the reasoning you're using, I would have-
I'm using several others, Kathleen, I'm not done, but-
I would have thought it would have been more because of the maintenance issue associated with it.
Kathleen, I haven't finished, I've, I've got about six reasons why I don't want to do this, and I got through the first one, and, almost, but I've got others, and that is, that is one of them. If we take that subdivision to maintain, we have to sweep that thing fairly often. The best sweeper is a regenerative air sweeper, where you don't go outdoors with your air, you just keep it, keep it within itself. Instead of distributing the dust over the neighborhood, you keep it all in the machine. I haven't been able to find one that fits a sidewalk. They make them for sidewalks, but they tend to be the other kind. And maybe I just haven't looked enough.
Why are we sweeping our sidewalks?
Well, you, you have to sweep permeable pavement, David.
This is, um, what I don't think the public would be aware of. Um, permeable pavement requires high maintenance, because what it is, is the fines clog it up. So it's almost like you have to suck it up, get everything in there in order for that drain. And that's the part where, if it's on a sidewalk, who's going to maintain it? Who's going to make sure it's functioning? It's a, that, it's a maintenance issue.
Okay.
You can't just sweep it, you've got to sweep it with the best vacuum arrangement possible, which is a regenerative air vac, and I don't, I haven't found one that fits sidewalks yet. They make them for streets. The other issue is the cost, and again, I would, I don't want to, to lay costs on people from which we're getting nothing back. Now, the-
I don't, I don't-
The sidewalk, the sidewalk in itself, by making that, the only way the permeable pavement works economically, and it does, in many, many cases, is because you don't need to do detention ponds, you don't need to reinfiltrate, et cetera. By making the sidewalk, uh, pervious and leaving the street as an impervious situation, you're, all you're doing is taking the, the detention pond and letting him make it a bit smaller. You, you, there's no money in it. In other words, we're laying a big expense, and we're not getting to anything for it.
I think you're getting a benefit anyway, you're getting recharge.
You're getting recharge, you get recharges elsewhere, you can get recharge in the, in the detention pond.
I, I understand where you're coming from, it's not so much of trying to get credits, or this, or that, but more of just being a more green.
Yeah.
And I think, coming from that point, looking at it, my concern would be is, how are you going to maintain this so it doesn't become just a regular pavement?
There is more. There's more.
More what?
Okay, more reasons why I don't want to do it, okay, that's, I haven't finished.
John, no, no one's, no one's cutting you off, he's asking a question.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
You keep getting very aggravated about something, and we're not.
No, no, I'm, I'm sorry, I, I keep hearing, like, we're done, we're not done. I've got several other things that are, that need to be mentioned. The state requirements say that we need to be 50 feet from the nearest detention pond, uh, leaching field, and 100 feet from the nearest well, anyplace we put porous pavement. And I think that even on a two-acre lot, 200 by 200-foot lot, that really ties the developer's hands, because very frequently, there's only a portion of the lot that perks. You see what I'm saying?
So-
So if we run this along the front of the lot, you're well beyond, you're well into the house before you could have, you, you basically have to have your leaching field in the back of the house. Okay, and that, your well has to be there, too. Now there, instead of being at opposite ends of the, of the property, they are, they are forced to be closer together than they otherwise would. Okay?
So that's only in the case of subdivisions not served by municipal water and sewer?
If they are on sewer, and there are very few that are, but a subdivision on municipal water is less of a problem, but you still have the septic system to deal with.
So, but, but, okay, what I'm simply saying is that this is only a concern in the case of subdivisions that aren't on water and sewer.
It's only in the case of subdivisions that are not on sewer. It's, it's still an issue if you have city water.
Right.
It's still an issue if you have city water.
Why is it an issue?
Because you, you have the 50-foot requirement as a setback of the nearest leaching field to any porous pavement. That's in the stormwater handbook under the section on porous pavement. Are you with me?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
We, we know what a 50-foot setback is.
I'm sorry?
We are all aware of a 50-foot setback.
You're, you're looking at me like, you, you're not getting it, you are getting it.
No, that's, that's, that's a substantive problem.
Yeah, it is, now, I would really like to do this, and I would like to do the whole doggone thing, I'd like to do the street as well. The conventional wisdom is that it doesn't work for streets. UNH has found at least one subdivision where it has worked fine. It would absolutely not work, because the structural integrity of porous pavement just isn't there. It would absolutely not work, because the structural integrity of porous pavement just isn't there. It would not work for Scotland Road. It would certainly not work for High Road. But it, I would think it would work fine for Colby Lane. But I don't think there's enough information there. We haven't had enough subdivision going through enough winters, enough fire trucks turning around and so forth, to really know that. What I would like to do, in the interest of doing this, is to, at some point over the next couple of years, we have to do this as part of our permit anyway. We've got to do something like this. Get several towns together, the DPW teams, and whatever contractors we have, and anybody else that wants to come, and get somebody from Bronx and somebody from UNH, at the very least, to talk about this and get people educated. Martha and Doug have been to, I think you went to one seminar that, that dealt with this at UNH. I've been to three at UNH on this subject. John Hartnett has built one. He's actually done one. To my knowledge, that is the only knowledge that exists in town in Newbury about it.
About?
About pervious pavement. And it is, nowhere in the world would I spec it as the engineer of record on a job. And I'm sure as hell not going to vote for it, you know, as a town.
Well, just so, just so you know, because you keep making it sound like you're the only one that's knowledgeable in this area, I just spent six months on stuff like this, just so you know.
I do not think I'm the only one that's knowledgeable. I just got through saying that I wasn't knowledgeable enough.
Fine. Is that, do we have any more issues that we need to think about? Because I think these are all substantive. I'm going to make a suggestion, but.
Please do.
Any more?
I think that that was a very good suggestion in the first place. I, I'm not knocking.
Right.
The suggestion you made.
Right.
As a matter of fact, that's where I was when we started. I had a draft, I don't know if it ever got out, but I ever had a draft saying exactly that. And then as I got into it a little bit more, it didn't seem like such a good idea.
Okay. Then may I suggest that we change the language of this to encourage it.
Yep.
As opposed to mandate it.
Yep. I'm quite okay with that.
So that in the future, if we can, or it won't be us, someone else can in fact change it to mandate it if, if the technology and the knowledge and the experience is there.
I'm fine with encouraging it. In fact, I would go further and encourage it on the road as well. Because we had a better chance of doing it. I don't think anybody's going to do it for the sidewalk alone. But if every, all the pavement were, were this, this, you know, pervious, then.
See, where I've run into it frankly, is on bikeways, okay? Where bikeways in many countries in Europe are of various kinds of permeable pavement. And I've never seen high vacuum vehicles sweeping them. Now, it may be because they don't use one that has fines that can, you know, clog the system. Maybe they're using, you know, you know, concrete honeycomb or that kind of thing. But most of them seem to me, you know, to do pretty well. And that's why I was thinking that when you're thinking about sidewalks and bikeways, and also, I mean, I find it interesting that we're very concerned about the width of the sidewalk so two people can pass in their wheelchairs, but there's no discussion of the surface. And having been someone who volunteered pushing people around in wheelchairs for a number of years off and on, I can tell you, the surface is just as important as the width of anything.
Sure it is.
You know, so, you know, it's, it's kind of ironic what we, what we get concerned about and what we don't. But let's, let's suggest that permeable pavement is something that is highly encouraged or whatever.
Yep, I'm, I'm fine with that. Does anybody object to carrying that on to the road surface as well?
Making it an option or a requirement?
No, 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 as an option, sure, an encouraged option.
Sure.
Problem?
Yep.
Any other comments then on subdivision?
I didn't have any other.
All right, let's move on. Potential zoning amendments for the spring annual meeting? The review of the draft medical marijuana bylaw?
Now, George and I have been exchanging drafts on that. He has the latest and will get comments to me tomorrow. So my, my goal would be to get it out to you before the weekend, so you all have a chance to look at it.
All right. And that was one of the requirements that we needed to schedule a meeting for next week.
Right.
So I guess the question is, is Mr. Weiss will be still away? Would anybody like to propose a date for next week?
We had talked about tentatively doing it next Wednesday.
Is that okay with everyone?
Sure.
26th.
And are we, are we still looking at seven, or do we want to make it earlier? We're not going to have any appearances scheduled, correct? So this would be strictly to this.
Focus totally on the zoning.
So do you want to make it seven, or do you want to make it earlier?
Seven's fine.
Linda? John, you're okay with seven?
Yeah.
All right, I'll be seven o'clock next week then. And that will be the final draft for review, Martha?
Well, it'll be the final draft before making the recommendation to the selectmen. You know, there's still opportunity to tweak it before the public hearing.
But before it goes to the selectmen, that will be it? And that will be, that will be the draft that's available to the public?
Yeah. Yeah, probably, unless the board. It'll be available to the public the second week in March, I think, so.
I thought whatever we proposed to the selectmen is what we have to make available? No?
No, there's still time to make changes.
All right. The next item is review of the revised drafts. I plan review and revisions by law and regulations.
We already talked about that.
We've done that.
And next is the draft flood hazard overlay district revisions?
Yeah, and I don't have anything new on that. You've already seen it, so.
All right. New business is the LED signs?
LED signs. And this, this is something that I did meet with the historical commission last week regarding the draft demo delay bylaw and passed on all the comments. I'd written a memo and then passed on verbally the comments that, that the board had made on the, on the bylaw. And at the end of it, Channing, the chair, requested that the board take a look at either instituting a moratorium on LED signs or developing some criteria provisions to go in our sign bylaw. His concern is that a lot of gas stations are now starting to use the LED signs, including, I think, the AL Prime and Ipswich and some in Hamilton.
So right.
They're extremely bright.
Is, is a sign on Plum Island for the?
That's not, I don't think that's LED.
No, it isn't?
Yeah, that's a flashing sign.
All right.
Or a digital sign. At Peter Hall?
Peter Hall.
No, but it's the basic technology of an LED. We have to be very careful here. And I think we can only really consider this if we have some documented examples. Photography, you know, is perfectly possible of these things, though they are a bit temperamental. We could quite easily amend our bylaw where it refers to moving. I can't remember the words, but you have it there?
Yeah, I do have it.
So this doesn't refer to any signs that are lit up or moving? It's, it seems like there's multiple category, categories right now for these type of signs? Or I'm, I'm getting a little confused. Before, we had our standard sign, you know, just no lights. And now we have the Peter sign down there, and now we have a different sign. Are we looking at addressing all these signs that are lit up, or just these LED signs? Right now, I thought it was legal to have the sign like there is at Peter in our bylaw.
No, it's not.
It's not?
Well, right now.
Ending, actually. What does it say?
Our zoning says the following types of signs are not allowed. Animated signs, roof signs, off-premise signs. So that would be a sandwich board that's a block away from whatever it's advertising. Signs containing red or green lights, except for holiday signs.
I thought that the Peter sign's moving.
It's blue. Not red or green.
No, it's moving.
No, no, but, okay, so what else? Anything else?
Signs illuminate between 11:00 and 7:00, 8, 11:00 PM, 7:00 AM, unless the premises open. Signs illuminated so as to cast a glare onto any portion of a way, which would create a traffic hazard. Signs erected within the right-of-way of any street, and signs attached to a public utility pole.
Right. Of course, all of which we have transgressions of anyway, but, okay. The animate probably could be interpreted to apply to the Peter sign.
Right, because the definition of an animated sign is any sign which attracts attention by movement, changing colors, flashing, or revolving.
Yeah, you see, flashing. Now, what we would need to add, in my estimation, because I, this is something that's sort of like John and you, it's my bailiwick. We need to add something that covers signs that create virtual or apparent movement. You know, illuminated signs that create virtual or apparent movement or scroll, meaning that, you know, they, you know what I mean?
What is the one on Plum Island?
It does all of those things.
It does all of those things.
That's what I'm saying, doesn't it move?
Yeah, it, it does. Well, it, it, it's funny. It actually, no, you see, what it, okay, you've seen the signs on the highway recently concerning the bridge construction? Those signs basically come from a keyboard sort of device, okay? And what, even though they can appear to move and change, they are not actually physically moving. What they are simply is essentially many individual lights, okay, in rows and columns. And, and all you do is you, you type in your message and your instruction as to what you want it to do, how long you want it to be there, whether you want it to, you know, go off to the side, or, you know, you can do all kinds of things depending. Of course, DOT, you know, has the cheapest kind, basically. But you can have signs that, you know, produce a starburst of color if you've got colored LEDs. This is why probably this has come up. But I think that we don't, we, we, we need to be careful not to talk about LED signs, because LED is a description of a light source, not a sign. You know?
And I don't know enough about the, the technology. I mean, I think his concern is the fact that these signs are using LEDs because they're so much brighter and more intense than other kinds of bulbs. And I, I didn't actually have looked at it today. I haven't seen the AL Prime down in Ipswich, so I'm not.
Right.
I'm not sure myself exactly what.
So he's requesting that we draft something, or?
He was requesting that we, you know, consider, you know, making a change to our bylaw to, to cover these kinds of signs, or establish a moratorium.
We, do we, we don't have time to do that before.
I talked to him about the, the tightness of our schedule. And if we need to do any research on it or something, it's, it's probably not likely. But he feels that they're sort of marching in this direction, especially because we have the AL Prime in Byfield.
So do you have a suggestion what we do tonight, then?
Um, I don't really. I was going to put something out on the Mass Planers List serve to see if anybody, any other communities have addressed this, and if they have any, you know, language.
What is the wish of the board then tonight to handle?
I mean, who, what do we have that would be putting the sign up right now? It seems like it's gas stations. There's not a gas station on Route 1, and that's it.
Well, we've got that one and the one over in Byfield.
There's, yeah, there's one in Byfield. That doesn't use anything but your sort of standard gas station signs currently, anyway. No, it doesn't.
But it is part of a chain, and if one of the others in the chain is using it, they, you know, they could think about it.
Right, well, as I say, I think, you know, the difficulty here is it's better if we go in the direction of preventing movement, which is the, or apparent movement. Because I, I don't think any, anybody is, I, I may be wrong about this, but, you know, I don't think anybody's going to invest in a sign which uses LED lights currently, anyway, who is not going to do it because they want it to be able to be programmable. Either to flash, or to display a message, or to easily change your price point, or whatever it is.
Well, they might, because they're very energy efficient and they last for a long time.
Well.
So, you know, stationary.
Yeah, that's true. But that's why, as I say, please, when we get requests like this, this is like saying, you know, should we ban babies? I mean, in a sense, it's, 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 it's huge, it's a portmanteau sort of thing. Let's see some examples.
I think, I think the concern is justified, though. I, I understand the concern, but I don't know how we deal with it within the next week. If that's our deadline in the next week, we do not have the ability to come up with something, unless there's something that you've drafted.
Yeah, which I, I haven't at this point.
Or there's something that could be, and I don't, so.
So we can talk about it, but not for this. Not for, we can talk about it for next.
Right, we could look at it for the fall town meeting.
Right. Much because we only have a week left.
Yeah.
Okay. Liaison reports? Does anybody have anything?
Nope.
No, we meet tomorrow, and we haven't met since last year, so.
So no?
You, you heard about the Angelo ratio? And the only other thing of interest was we had a MEPA site visit last Friday. Not much, David. It, it was very quiet. The DEP representatives didn't even come to the follow-on meeting at Peter Hall. They split. Tom Hughes put on a pretty good, you know, description of what was happening. There were some neighbors that were objecting, and I don't think there was any surprise there. It's baseball, a question of opinion. So I don't know where it's going to go from here.
And the issue basically is whether this can be up on stilts, I, I mean piles, and how high it has to be, and growth underneath the.
That has pretty well, the thing that's different, yeah, it's, it's up on piles and high enough and all of those things. The thing that's different is that Ross apparently made quite a study of lighting. He's even gotten a sprinkler system of sorts set up to be sure that the vegetation under the house not only has lights, but gets a reasonable amount of water. He's making the house round so he doesn't have corners to cast shadows. So I think he's done just about everything he could to, to make it user-friendly.
What were the, Abada's objections, in, in a nutshell?
It was, even as good as it was, it was still destabilizing the dune. I think that was the, the argument there.
And did they have any answer for that?
No, it isn't, is basically the answer. I mean, it was one of those things that nobody's going to win those arguments.
Your expert versus my expert.
You know?
Right.
I mean, everybody has their own agenda. There's, you have, you have the rules and regulations, and then you have, one party has their real agenda, and the other party has their real agenda, but the only battlefield they have is the rules and regulations.
Did you get any sense from the state folks who were there as to their current sort of attitude towards?
It's, they don't do that deliberately. They really try not to tell you what they think. They ask questions, and the questions are all the kind of questions you'd expect, just trying to understand the scope and how it, how what they see on paper relates to what is on the ground right in front of them. But, you know, there's very, I've only been to a few of them, but I've never been able to figure out where their heads were. One time, somebody from DEP muttered under their breath in my presence. It was separate from the meeting. I just happened to be someplace else where that person was. But that was not an official, it was just a muttering under one's breath. It wasn't terribly.
And this is, though, a primary dune site, right?
I'm sorry?
This is a primary dune site.
It's on the backside of a primary dune, yep.
Right. Okay, because I was intending to get there, but due to weather and a few things else.
The weather wasn't terribly conducive.
Right.
All right. Anybody have anything else they want to discuss? Whole business, a motion to close the meeting?
So moved.
Second? On favor?
Aye.